I now call the April 24th, 2020 meeting of New Caney Elementary District Board of Trustees at 6:02. As many show that Coral was present with Ms. Sharp absent, she'll be here when there's a lady. Please rise for the invocation and give it to my Mr. Turner. Remain standing for the flag of allegiance and honor the flag of our tradition.
Please, Powell. Father, thank you for this glorious day you've given us. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and just represent this district, represent our employees, and most importantly, our students that we take care of. And we ask that you give us the wisdom tonight. We make great decisions that will represent you and your will. We do love you and praise you and thank you in Jesus name and pray amen.
Amen. United States of America and a super republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor on Texas flag, high by allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item 2 on the agenda is recognition presented by Mr. Cowper. Yes, sir. We will start with New Caney Elementary and Miss Sessa.
Hi, everyone. I'm Raquel Sessa. I'm a principal at New Caney Elementary, and we have Mr. Burton and Ms. Lara, who are our two outstanding school members. I'm so excited to be here to recognize one of our amazing staff members and one of our fifth graders. So we're going to start with Ms. Maria Morales Torres, also known as Ma. She works in the cafeteria, one of our amazing ladies in child nutrition. I'm pretty sure she knows every student's name in the entire building. So much so that we even changed our breakfast line so that any student that does not have a tag goes through Ma's line because she just rocks and rolls. And so we just love her, and she doesn't just know their names, she also builds relationships with them, which is so powerful when you have a kiddo and you know that they're having a rough day, and she sees them through the lunch line, and she calls them by name and asks what she can do for them. And we just appreciate you so much, so please thank you. Ms. Lima is one of our hardworking custodians. She keeps our campus clean and safe for all of our students and staff. You know, as we all know, that it's hard to have custodians and bus drivers and all of these people that make our district run. And so when we're down custodians, Ms. Lima and Ms. Nancy, they go to TLC, they help out, they're helping out at other buildings, they work the morning shift, they go home and then they come back and work a night shift. I mean, they are just keeping our buildings clean and ready for our students. And so thank you for your long hours, always preparing our building for our visitors and events, and always willing to lend a hand when we can. So we just appreciate all that you do to keep our building clean and making them. Liz Mochica Martinez, also known as Ms. Liz, is one of our E.L. Perez. And she really does it all. She is our backup nurse, our backup receptionist. She helps with registration, and she covers classes, recess, U.B., lunch, whatever we need, and she always has a smile on her face. She's never complained about anything, she's always very positive. And we just, because I don't know what we do without you, so thank you so much. Crystal Harris is one of our fifth grade teachers. She's worked at N.C.E. for the last eight years, and she is a math rock star. And she's a fifth grade team leader, she's on our M.P.S.S. Tier One Committee, and she's always willing to help out where we need her. She's one of our key people for car rider, too. Always keeping that car rider line moving. And so, Ms. Harris, thank you for always being positive when times are tough. I know it has been a rough year, and Ms. Harris has always been positive. What can I do? We can make this work, so I just thank you, Ms. Harris. And last but not least is Jacoby Legrow, one of our fifth grade students. I was just joking with his family that when I was talking to my secretary, I said, "Mikela, I had to pick a fifth grade student, who do you think I chose?" And she said, "Jacoby." I said, "Of course." So Jacoby's one of our outstanding fifth grade students. He's intelligent, kind, hardworking, and thoughtful. I reached out to his teachers from pre-K through fifth and asked them to send me a little something about Jacoby, so I just picked a few to read to you guys, but they just, I was so proud when I read these, so I wanted to share a few with you. Jacoby has flourished throughout his years at New Caney Elementary. He has always been an individual student, both academically and socially. Not only does he make great choices, but he is also a leader and example to others. He is always willing to lend a hand with students and staff members. New Caney Elementary will be sad to see him go, but excited for what his bright future holds. Jacoby is a young man with incredible integrity and a huge heart. He is kind to everyone and always has a positive attitude. It is evident that Jacoby has been raised to have good manners, a kind heart, and a strong work ethic. It is my hope that Jacoby's amazing qualities transfer to all of those around him. He will be great in the midst at New Caney Elementary. Jacoby is always willing to go out of his way to make others feel included. Many times in class, he will step up and take the lead, but then he will also encourage his peers to join him to succeed as well. Jacoby has a strong work ethic and determined to succeed. He is always so hopeful, kind, and encouraging to others. I feel honored to be one of his teachers. I know that you guys heard those words repeated, talking about his strong work ethic, and he's always willing to help out others. We are so proud of Jacoby, and I'm really sad to see him go, but thankfully, we have one of his little sisters. We're going to see her around, right, Jacoby?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're going to shake everyone's hands.
All right. Next up on recognition is Dr. Rios and a lot of middle school warriors.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight we'll be recognizing some of our staff and students from Wyodok. So first off, I would like to recognize Coach Poplar and Valerie Poplar. She's our boys' P.E. teacher. Coach Poplar is a shining example of positive leadership. His attitude is contagious, and he is always available for the students. He spends time ensuring that his students are not just producing on the field, but also in the classroom. I promise you that if you spend five minutes talking to him, your whole day will change for the better, so I'm so thankful for teachers and coaches like Coach Poplar. Next up, I have Ms. Leah Cabrera. Ms. Leah Cabrera is our campus receptionist. Leah always has a positive attitude. She's known for her awesome and the safe mountains, we all look forward to them. She is always available to help, she is funny, and she has wit. She is an expert in helping our school look organized and clean. Ms. Cabrera is super creative and finds ways to make our school always look amazing with her artwork. Thank you, Ms. Cabrera, for all that you do. So for our auxiliary staff, I'd like to recognize Ms. Yolanda Sanchez. Yolanda is always willing to go the extra mile to ensure that our facility is in top condition and is highly dependable and reliable. In addition to her exceptional work ethic, Yolanda has a friendly and positive attitude, and is great at building relationships with our students. Anytime you need a confidence boost, you go to Yolanda, she makes, she will tell you your outfit is cute, she'll make it better. So I look forward to always getting a little confidence boost from her, and we're so thankful for all that she does at Wyodok. Next up, we have Ms. Nelly Shiner Olvera. She is, her smile just lights up the room. She is always so welcoming to our students when they're going through the lunch lines. We're so appreciative for making everything just run so smoothly, and we thank you so much for all that you do. So our student athlete is Tremo Busbos Carlos deserves to be recognized because he has consistently modeled what it needs to be a warrior. Carlos demonstrates respect for teachers and fellow students and represents Warrior Athletics as a starter on the basketball and football team. In addition to his athletic endeavors, Carlos is a member of the National Junior Honor Society and consistently volunteers to serve at school events and as a peer mentor to aspire students. He is truly a warrior that writes this. Our C.T. student is Desi Verone. Desi Verone is an exceptional individual and a remarkable freshman student at Wyodok. Not only does she excel as an outstanding representative for C.T., but she is also an accomplished athlete, a sincere friend, and a role model for her peers. Desi's unwavering determination and unwavering commitment to her many activities are admirable traits that we all should strive to emulate. However, her success does not come without hard work. She stays focused on all her endeavors, whether she is racing and showing her chickens at the county fair, traveling to livestock judging contests, or dominating the court. She gives every task her all. We are so proud of you. Our last one is our fine art student is Ayla Dalian. Ayla is a once-in-a-lifetime kind of student. She is bright, hardworking, and possesses more talent than most people know what to deal with. Not only does she excel in her honors academic courses, but she also goes above and beyond for both of her fine arts programs, theater, and choir. In addition, she is an officer for the Wyodok chapter of N.R.H.S., and she has even become to be the go-to person on our campus when we are looking for a master ceremonies or a student leader for school events. While many of our fine art students are born with talent, Ayla has mastered the ability to pair that natural talent with dedication and perseverance. We're so proud of Ayla. Thank you, thanks for allowing me the opportunity to showcase some of these amazing people at Wyodok.
All right. Item 4 on the agenda is Superintendent Forest Little School.
Well, first off, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity, especially the board, to be able to come up here and talk about some of the foul things, some of the amazing things that we're doing there, and just some of the amazing people that I get the pleasure of working with. It's not all the time that you get to see these people every day, someone would be glad to do see everything, but it's just good that we are able to do this so y'all can have the recognition of what I get to see every day and work with these kids and the staff. So I'm just going to go ahead and start off with the most important, and that's my students right now. So first up is Riley Anderson, this is C.T.E. This actually comes from Mr. Young, who was our C.T., our A.D. teacher. And he says, "Mr. Anderson is a student at the beginning of the year that was just interested in the future Farmers of America. He came to me a few times in the beginning, asking me questions, wondering what he could do to get involved, and just exactly what he could do to participate in the program. I held a short meeting with Mr. Anderson describing to him the different opportunities of what was readily available to him at the junior division of FFA. He opted to participate in the non-livestock division at the EMC Fair. This led him to wanting to get an animal project for the Montgomery County Fair, which he cared for from October until March of this school year. He placed in his classroom the bringing home agreement. Riley is a student that will be very successful in the future because of his hard work and his dedication to the program." Next up is Gabrielle Alfonso. So this actually comes from Mr. Smith, who was our art teacher, and says, "I've had the pleasure of having to work with Gabby as a student in my art class for two years at Woodbridge Forest Elementary School. She has shown amazing creativity and talent in all her assignments, and I'm glad to see her do well with her rodeo art. Her sculptural titled Button Luster was able to bring back the Best of Show trophy to Woodbridge Forest this year from the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo." That's a huge thing. Congratulations on that. "I've always seen her as a student that would go far in the future of education and fine arts. She has great determination, will do well with whatever she puts her mind to. Gabby is an excellent artist and athlete here at Woodbridge Forest and is knowledgeable in the arts and has always impressed me with her work ethic. Gabby is continuously pushing herself to do better as she continues to do amazing things and what she puts her mind to. I believe she will continue to inspire herself and grow in the years ahead." Next up, Nadia Camacho. This is our A.T. This comes from quite a few of the coaches, and I had to narrow it down because they just kept talking. So let me get through this. "All right. I am thrilled to recognize Nadia Camacho for her exceptional achievements in athletics. This individual has consistently demonstrated outstanding athleticism, dedication, and passion for her chosen sports. Her hard work and commitment to excellence has truly paid off, resulting in remarkable accomplishments on and off the field and court. Throughout her athletic career, Nadia has displayed exceptional skill and talent, setting new records and achieving numerous victories. Her remarkable achievements include playing all four sports in her seventh and eighth grade year, winning the Top Gun athlete for the 2021-2022, and keeping her academic grades above 70, all which have contributed to her impressive reputation as a top-performing athlete. However, Nadia Camacho not only has excelled in her sport, but also has demonstrated exceptional leadership skills, inspiring and motivating her teammates to strive for greatness. Her commitment to her team, sportsmanship, and unwavering dedication to her sport makes her an exceptional student athlete and a true inspiration to all. It is with great pleasure that I recognize Nadia Camacho for her outstanding achievements in athletics." Okay. Ms. Cruz was not able to be here with us tonight, and I'll explain why in a minute. So Ms. Cruz is one of our custodians, and I'm just going to keep it brief and short. It is not often that somebody beats me to work, except for when it's Ms. Cruz. So I usually get to work about 5:50, 6 o'clock, and she's usually greeting me at the door while looking at her watch like, "Why are you late?" I love being the first one in the building, but she said I will never show up to the building when it's not clean, and she means it. If there's a piece of trash on the ground, she's picking it up. She's going around holding kids accountable, saying, "Do this." Our school is almost 10 years old, and it looks like it did the first day that it opened up, and that's because of Ms. Cruz and her work and her dedication in holding everybody accountable. So I wish she was here, but if you ever see her, I call her the silent assassin because you will never hear her talk, because she is so busy working. So just a quick side note on Ms. Franklin. Ms. Franklin is, she is my lead cafeteria lady, and she is, got soul from me. And it kind of broke my heart today because I found out pretty abruptly that she just went over to New Caney High School, which is fine. If you ever go into Woodbridge Forest cafeteria and you're seeing the 435-plus kids trying to get fed in 30 minutes or 25 minutes, and you just see a blur running around in the background, that is Ms. Franklin. She is back there, always has a smile on her face, will tell me, "Whatever you mean, Mr. Carr, we're going to get these kids fed," and the kids are always happy, and they miss her. And I just wanted you to know that. The kids come up and say, "Where is she?" And I was like, "We'll have to go over to New Caney High School and see her." But no, watch how much, no, again, how much it's meant to me, and how it's meant to me when I came there, and how hard you worked. So, thank you, Ms. Franklin. Another person that couldn't be here tonight is Ms. Brenda Gomez Juarez. Ms. Gomez is my eighth-grade A.P. secretary, and it would be a lot funnier if she was here because she's about this tall. And I was going to have her stand next to me, you'd see her little feet dangling in the chairs. Ms. Gomez started off as a paraprofessional in special education over at Woodbridge, and I noticed her immediately when I first started working there a year ago, and I said, "This lady needs to be on my administrative staff." The reason was because she pushes me to be a better person. She accepted the job as the eighth-grade A.P. and the bookkeeper, and if you have no idea what that job entails, then you have no idea how hard she works. Her, the way she pays attention to details, her work ethic, holding kids accountable, is just above everybody that I've ever worked with. She will come to me and leave Post-it notes all over my desk, and that's mainly because I never remember to do what she tells me to do. So she will come at the end of the day and say, "Have you gotten to that one?" I said, "I haven't even gotten to the first one yet." And she will stand there, and I'm like, "Now's a good time," so she will get it done. I always relate to her. If you've ever watched those old cartoons of little guys just running around and his legs are just a blur, that's Ms. Gomez, because it's often times I have to pick up my pace to keep up with her when we're walking somewhere, but she's like, "Let's go, we've got stuff to do." So I wish she was here. If you see her, congratulate her because she's an amazing person. So this is Ms. Morgan. She is more than just a department chair for special education, she is just good for people. When I met Ms. Morgan, she had a smile on her face, always does. We've shared tears, we've shared laughter and everything else, and I just want to read a little something before, you know, I get teary-eyed with her. "Ms. Morgan is a special education department chair of W.F.M.S. She's an amazing teacher and coworker. She loves what she does and looks every student, looks at every student individually, and comes up with a plan of success for that student. However, Ms. Morgan is more than just a great educator, she is a phenomenal person. Her caring heart, empath, empathy for others makes her a valuable person to everyone she meets. Ms. Morgan always puts people before herself and will always greet you with saying, 'How are you doing?' And if you don't answer honestly, she'll look at you and say, 'Wait a minute, honestly, how are you doing?' And then she usually followed up with, 'How can I help?' Or, 'What can I do for you?' You will never find Ms. Morgan without a smile on her face, and no matter her personal or professional stress happening in her life, she never backs down from a challenge and always finds the good in every situation. Ms. Morgan, I appreciate you more than you will ever know, and also thank you for always checking on me. You are a person that only wants the best out of the campus, but wants the best right in person."
All right. Item 3 on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state trip for New Caney High School History Fair.
Hey, guys, it's my pleasure to come talk to you a little bit about this honor for New Caney High School. The second week of junior, New Caney High School students and staff will be traveling to Washington DC to compete in History Fair. All projects competing have a college-level analysis and research. They have been working on these projects since August. This will be the program's fifth year competing at the national level. Carr Holden will be competing. His project is called Windows to the Universe because his project is about how the Hubble Space Telescope was a frontier in astrophotography and helped create equal access of NASA-level STEM education and space research to education in amateur astrophotography. This project is competing in the individual exhibit category. This will be his third time to compete at the state level. Joanna Jonathan and Ismail, their project is Clappers, The New American Feminist, which is about the generation of women in America during the 1920s and how they were a continuation of the frontier of the women's suffering movement. These women changed how society viewed women in culture, society roles, economic roles, and how their roles changed in the face of the World War. They are competing in the group website category. This is Joanna's second time to compete at the national level, and Ismail, and Jonathan's first time. Megan and Mike Souchek are two of our teachers, and they're the driving force behind History Fair, so couldn't be more proud of them going and competing for the fifth year in a row. Thanks, guys.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state trip for New Caney High School Ministry Fair?
Considered.
Motion to move in second, there'd be no further discussion of what would be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is approved. Item 4 on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state trip for Porter High School Theater, presented by Caesar Kandarko.
Good evening, and thanks for allowing me to come and speak on behalf of my students and my directors at the school. For the first time in New Caney ISD history, Porter High School had five students qualified for Nationals at the State Festive Festival in Dallas. These students each received perfect scores in their contests and earned a place at the national contest in Indiana this June. They will compete for gold medals in acting and technical theater contests and have the opportunity to audition for colleges all over the country. They'll spend one week on the campus of Indiana University Bloomington, but they will be able to attend workshops with college teachers and professional actors, directors, and technicians, as well as see nationally qualifying plays from high schools all over the country. This is a huge opportunity for these kids and a point of pride for New Caney ISD. If we send these five students, not only will they come home with new skills, they can pass on the rest to our theater students, but they will raise a bar for future students who will be working to match their accomplishments. I'd like to recognize, and most of them are here tonight, so if I want to say their name, if you'd stand up, Isabel Durant, Parker Warren, Zoe Soward, Kayla Krelson, and Ryan Mayfield. And then their director, Mr. Soward's here as well.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state trip for Porter High School Theater?
Considered.
Motion to move in second. What would be taken? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is approved. Congratulations. Okay. Item 5 on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state trip for Porter High School Engineering Department, presented by Mr. Kandarko.
Again, thank you a lot, allowing me to speak on behalf of my kids, because this is all about our kids and our directors that do a phenomenal job on our campus. A little bit of detail about our Samsung thing, if you don't know about them, but over the last four years, they've won over $297,500. This team will present their project and have it set up at the New Caney ISD Maker Fair on May 20th from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m. at Porter High School. So we asked the committee to come in and interact with them and ask them questions. So a little bit about their description of their product that they picked this year. Every year, the global bee population experiences a staggering 50% decline due to changes in temperature and other various reasons. Bees are on the brink of extinction. Hive Hub, what's the name of their project, was created to help solve this problem. Hive Hub operates using a monitoring device implemented inside hives where live feed bag is sent to the app. This user-friendly system allows beekeepers to keep record of the temperature, humidity, weight, as well as the bee traffic in and out of the hive. By simply keeping these parameters in check, the need for beekeepers to disturb their hives and potentially kill thousands of bees is eliminated. They'll be coming to Washington DC in a few weeks to pitch their project and hopefully win, and they'll be three-time back-to-back champion, national champion. Again, I'd like to recognize our students that are here, and their directors, so if you'd please stand when I say your name, Caitlin Chavez, River Doughty, Michael Robbins, Karma Kandarko, Jace Gable, and Tristan Doughty. And then their directors are two of the best, Mr. and Mrs. Doughty.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state trip for Porter High School Engineering? Motion is moved in second, there'd be no further discussion of what would be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
If you'd please go out and vote online, it's all over social media. If we win the popularity contest as well, I think we win an additional $10,000 for our kids, and all that money comes back to Porter High School to our engineering kids, so. It's all over the Porter High School social media, but it's also in the Caney ISD social media. I know Mr. Mixon shared it on his personal Board of Trustees one, but you can vote one time every day, so we ask that you please do that. Thank you.
Item 6 on the agenda is superintendent report, presented by Mr. Cowper. Sir, this time I had Ms. Schaffner and Ms. Good come up to present accountability update. If you find yourself wondering or thinking, "Hey, this doesn't make any sense,"
If you find yourself wondering or thinking, "Hey, this doesn't make any sense," then you're probably following along pretty great, honestly. So they've done a great job of synthesizing this data and playing out some scenarios for you guys, but it's really an education piece of something that we want to be in front of, be aware of. We want our campuses aware of, our communities aware of. And so they've done a really good job of simplifying what is a very complex, oftentimes illogical system that we are working with. So Ms. Schoffner is cool, and it's making...
I just wanted to use Ms. Good because we're so lucky to have an accountability assessment at director, and so she's our guru for all things accountability. And she has represented us at the 550.
Not now.
So she has condensed this down as much as we can go. So it's very insightful.
Very good.
Well, thank you for letting me come to you. I know this is time is precious, and just any time I can in front of you, I appreciate, and I appreciate what you do for our students and our staff. You know, this year, we have scored the perfect storm. They've given us not only STAR 2.0, which means they've changed it drastically, but they're also giving us a new accountability system. And we're gonna go through just the high points of that. Convergence of these two things is very, it's just unprecedented. Usually, we get an accountability system or we get a new STAR. These never happen at the same time. And so I think it gives you a peek into what these principals and teachers and all these, and the kids on the campuses are going through just trying to make sure that they are able to do everything that they're supposed to do to kind of show the state who we are. You know, we get good, bad, or otherwise. We get that's posted for us, and that's one of the ways that we're held accountable. We don't mind being accountable, but this is a lot. So first, this is just the highlight of STAR 2.0. I tried to make sure that you knew just the biggest pieces of it. It will be transitioning to an online assessment with embedded online accommodations. We have only maybe two students who are taking something other than an online test, and they are taking real. And so last year, and all the years before you, like, we've been testing online. Those were PDF tests that were online. These are true online interactive pieces, all the different questions. The time now has been extended to full day. They used to limit us to a certain number of hours for the different kinds of campuses. But this is extensive work, and so they're giving the students the full school day to work. Seventy-five percent is the multiple choice cap, which means at least 25% of the new items will be, or 25% of the tests will be the new items. The new items, there are lots of different kinds. We're gonna show you a quick clip of that. I know that your committee, the instruction committee, y'all come back and reported on some of those earlier this year. So when we were at the assessment conference, we had all the 550 slides. Mainly, what they told us was that 25 is the minimum that will be on there. There's likely to be more than 25% of the new items. Some of those are short constructive response in reading, science, and social studies. 475 characters, so letters, spaces do not count. They're gonna have to come up with a short constructive response beginning in third grade, all the way through high school. Extended constructive response are in reading courses and in English, so third through English II. And they have to write 2,300 characters. It used to be kind of defined within a page that had a certain number of lines on it, and they've changed it over to this character count because all of it will be typed online. They can prepare on paper, like, write it out on paper, but it has to ultimately be submitted online. They increased the number of cross-curricular passages. So some of the passages they will be reading in their reading and English classes are about science or social studies, and they will be answering questions from post. Some questions are worth multiple points, so you may get one or two points. And the whole configuration of that is something to just kind of dive into. That would take another whole, like, 40 slides, but we're not gonna do that. New item types, some of the kinds, hotspots, drag-and-drop, multi-part, multi-select, so multiple, multiple choice are some of the ones that we see frequently. And I wanted to just kind of give you a snapshot of what a third grader might have to do in reading. They have nine passages to read, nine. There's a total word count of 3,400 words. So some of those passages are single passages, some of them are paired passages, where they're reading between two passages and comparing the two. And then they also have about 49 questions, and they have to write also a composition, which is the extended constructive response. Okay, so that 2,300 characters. So it kind of progresses up and gets more, the load gets more as you get bigger, but I think that's a pretty good snapshot of just what our third graders are gonna have to do this year for STAR 2.0.
As a parent of a third grader, I really appreciate you putting it in perspective for us like that.
I just think it's, I have a second grade grand, and I was like, "She's gonna do this next year." I'm like, "It's a lot, it's just a lot." And they're not easy passages, they're extensive. So that's kind of this overview of STAR 2.0. My next slide really has, not every subject has every kind of question. So math has, you can see which ones, which grades, three through eight, whether they're on EOCs, and which kind they have. So it's sorted there for you, and it gives you a little bit of a description of it. So these are, these are in your slides, so if you want to look at it more extensively, that's a place that you can go and just see who has to do some of the different things. Okay?
So kids are also having, have to learn all of these different types of questions and how to answer those in addition to everything else.
Yeah, we're very fortunate that people in the district have had the foresight for one-to-one and all of those things, and we've had some programs that mimic this. This was the first year we actually got to see the real ones.
And our campuses have done a really good job of having a calendar where they're introducing one of these every few weeks.
Purposefully practicing those. All right, so that was just really for your reference. Now, this is the big piece. It kind of tells me there are a lot of pieces going on on this. I think it's important for us to understand when we're having these two things happen at the same time, sort of the order things that will happen. Normally, we have assessment about this time of year, and we are fully into assessments now. And they will go from, last week was the first week of assessments, they go all the way through May the 2nd, I mean, May the 12th. And so all of that's happening right now. Another thing that's gonna happen for us is they're gonna give us what-if reports. They're gonna do that by the end of April. And the what-if report takes all of our 2022 data and dumps it into the new proposed accountability system. Now, note that this accountability system is not solid. If you notice right there, it says draft of the manual comes out at the end of April, and they're gonna give us a what-if based on what we did last year. If you'll notice further, though, you don't get a final accountability manual until August. In between that time, you see, May, we finish up. They're gonna give us some raw scores with little tables that say things like, "Likely to pass," "Zone of uncertainty," and "Likely not to pass." And all we have are raw scores to determine kind of where kids are. We're gonna get that on May 22nd for both our EOCs and our pre-grad aid. And then May 31st, we're gonna get something for EOCs because this is their effort to have kids be able to graduate. Well, you notice that that's a week after most of our kids graduate. Luckily, our board addressed that and made sure that we did what was right for students who are working towards that. We appreciate that very much. But they haven't told us what their performance levels are gonna be. What we do know is that usually we get those by approaches, meets, and masters. Notice where it says standard setting, June and July. After all tests have been submitted and graded, then they're going to do standard setting. Okay? So we don't know what approaches, meets, and masters cut scores are and won't know until mid-July. After that, in August, August the 8th, they will send us EOC reports. You know how we get those student report cards? Those will come to us on August the 8th. We won't get three through eight STAR reports until August the 11th. They'll give us our final accountability manual right after that. And then sometime in September or early October, they will give us our A through F8. And that's because they've given all of this new test and new accountability at the same time. So we think, we want parents to know that. I know our principals have done some things about getting that word out. Principals have been getting this in sort of bite-sized pieces as the state puts them out. Once they, they had something in November, they had something in January. And we always just update them at their principals' meetings about what is the latest thing that they've added to us or changed as they've gone on in this system. So I just think that's a pretty interesting look, and I made y'all a slide just of that because if you're gonna get, anybody's gonna get questions, it's probably y'all. So you kind of have the timeline there. Any questions for me about that one? Okay, we'll go right ahead. So we're gonna shift over now into accountability and how all of that STAR and the other ways that we're held accountable work together. Last year, every one of our campuses in the district were a C or higher in that A through F scale. Okay? And that was mainly due to the growth. So I've got the growth highlighted there. If you are an elementary or middle school, and this year, also Westworth High School because they don't have a graduation class, they will be judged by this, what we call a Pac-Man, but it's this mix of our hatred of Pac, it kind of does look like a Pac-Man. What can happen with them is that 85% of your score can come from growth. So you have domain one, that's achievement, how did you do approaches, meets, and masters divided by three. Domain two, A, which is growth, and then two B is how did you do on that achievement compared to other people? I think we've told y'all that several times before, so that's just a little refresher. And then that can be 70%. Whatever's best out of one, two A, or two B becomes 70% of those scores. However, it can also, if it's growth is your best, it can also become 50% of your domain three score. And that's what happened with most of our schools last year, and that's focusing on growth after COVID. We've had so many kids that have gaps, and so that's what we focused on, was making sure that every kid, whether they were at the approaches level or trying to get to the approaches level or all the way up to the masters level, moved forward, that we moved, we were trying to decrease the gaps that they may have had. High schools are a little different. Their domain one has that growth, but it also has, no, domain one has, it's academic achievement, 40%, so that's how you did on STAR. And then 40% of it is CCMR, college career military readiness. 20% of their domain one is graduation rate. And so same thing again, we do that combination, and one, two, or three, one, two A or two B actually becomes 70%. But their domain threes are a little different. It still has that CCMR piece in it. Okay, so that's how we do it. They did add some growth there for some more ways that you can grow through high school. So domain one, and that's, I said this one, approaches, meets, and masters. So you either did not meet grade level, approached, met, or masters grade level. If you're in the masters grade level, you've also met an approach. So it basically counts a kid three times. If you're in meets, it counts twice, right, for the average. So we take the percent of approaches grade level, add it to meets grade level and masters grade level, divide that by three, and that's how we get our STAR performance. But that's a pretty good graphic for domain one. College career military readiness is where we took our biggest hit this year with the new accountability system so far. First of all, I want you to know that those scores are based on kids who graduated in the 21-22 cohort. So they're already out of our building and have been out of our building for about a year. Okay? I listed just the different ways that you can get a college career military readiness point. The other thing that this accountability system did was on the industry-based certifications, you know, there are several of those that our campuses get, even though they're gone already, they've done some sunsetting on certain certifications. And it limits the number of our 22 graduates who can count for those, even those graduates graduated within a year. So they changed the system after the kids left. And they may have gotten those points in either ninth, 10th, 11th, or 12th grade. So they've had them for four years, and now they're not valid anymore. Only 20% of certain sunsetting certificates were counted. The other thing was a major change in scaling. And so, you know, we get a score, we get a raw score, and then we get a scaled score. This is, this shows you how it changed. So if you want a 90, which is an A, which is what our campuses had last year for CCMR, you would have needed a 60, right? For instance, New Caney High School last year, I remember theirs being 62. So 62% of our students in the year 21-22, when it counted, they were actually the 21 graduates. So they graduated in 2021, the remote year, right? 62% still had a college career military readiness point. Now, in order to have an A, you'd have to have 88% of your students. So if you're a 62, look at where the scale is now. You automatically become a D for the same percentage. So that's one of the biggest changes in our accountability system this year.
I have a question.
Yes.
So on the previous slide, when I talked about the SAT and ACT, is it, do they get a point just because they take the test?
No, you have to read. The industry-based certification, there has to meet certain things, associate course, associates degree. The workforce readiness are for our students with IAPs, but each one of those does have a specific thing you have to reach. Like, it says on AP scores, you have to have a four-year veteran. I didn't list every one of those. And you have to have like nine hours of dual credit. So there are qualifiers beyond that, so it was just a quick summary for you. So yes, you have to reach those, and now they've changed that. So that's domain one, that was the biggest change there. Domain, the other big change is, we don't know what approaches, meets, and masters are gonna be. They haven't settled yet, remember in the other slide. Two A is academic growth, it's what our district did best last year. And this is our new way that we're gonna figure that. And I've got three slides, and this is the best I could do. That's the best I could do. So we have a growth here, and notice how it's got low did not beat, high did not beat, low approaches, high approaches, and then meets and masters. Okay? They've split it out a little bit because in did not beat and low approaches, there are lots and lots of questions. By the time you get to meets and masters, there's only maybe six questions difference between those two categories. So basically, it's color-coded, which we like. So if from last year, a 2022 STAR, when you compare it to 2023 STAR, all these on this left side, it tells you how many grew in those different things last year. And over here, it tells you how many grew basically a year, at least a year. Green means we fully grew a year, we get a point for it. Blue means they stayed relatively the same, but they didn't get a full point, they got a half a point. And red means they did not grow a full year. Okay? Out of that, we had 109 points. You can see how they did those, half a point, there are 24 of those, you got 12. Give you a quick math there. Then there's 45-45. Has anybody heard of 45-45? We did. So they looked at different places in our system and decided that the best place to put this was in growth. We thought at first they were gonna put all of them in the denominator twice. They did not. They gave us some bonus points for them, a little bonus point. So basically, you have to move from one of the red categories into one of the others, and you get a point. Okay? Then they combined the two. Notice in the 45-45, the big orange one that says 45-45, there were 28 students earning a point. Right? When you go down to the green one, you can see where the 109 was circled on the left there, the 28 on the right, and you go down to the bottom, and the 28 now becomes a seven because they're gonna divide it, or they're gonna multiply it times .25 or divide it by four. So how you would have had 28 points there, now you have only seven points. You add it to your original and come 116, now 172 kids that were in the whole chart, you get a 67. Okay? So it's a little different. They thought it was a pretty equitable way, and I agree that it's better than putting them in the denominator twice. Okay? So growth. Next one's two B. Basically, two B is really about how we did on domain one scores, that approaches, meets, masters divided by three, CCMR, graduation. And then they compare us to 40 schools that were selected by TEA. We don't select them. They do select them based on similarly economically disadvantaged. But one of the things we found is, our principals are very strict, and they're like, "If there's a school that's like us, and they're doing better than us, we're calling to find out what they're doing, and we may go see them." Well, what we found is, New Caney High School may have Porter in their 40, but Porter's looking at theirs, and New Caney High School's not in it. So the way they figure them is very interesting. I think I hesitate to use "highly" because I'm talking about TEA and, you know. But it's very interesting. So we found that in several cases, that they may be in one comparison group, but you may not be in theirs. And then that similarly economic disadvantage is right. They were supposed to add some other things, but haven't fully said they're gonna do that. that yet. But remember, we're not through till August. Okay. Domain three is about closing the gaps. It looks very, very different. This was completely overhauled since last year. If you've talked about closing the gaps, it's always about subpops. Every subpop, ethnicity, and then our economic disadvantage, our students who are served instead, emergent bilinguals, all of these different groups are in there. And before, we always looked, the ones that counted for or against us were only those categories that had at least 25 tests. This year, they've dropped that down to they had at least 10 tests. So, it opened up a whole lot more people that we could look at. However, they decided, we had 14 groups before, they've decided to reduce that to four. And here are the four groups that they're going to use. They're going to use the off-student group. We pay a lot of attention to that anyway because we want every student to succeed. Then, they're going to pick the two lowest race and ethnicity groups from last year in 2022, and they're going to judge us on those two. And then, they're going to do a high focus group, which combined is economically disadvantaged, our set population, our emergent bilinguals, and our homeless migrant fosters. So, four times you get a score, and they're from those groups right there. So, you can imagine that a lot of the kids, you know, we're around that 70% economically disadvantaged, so you know they're going to count twice, right? At least twice. And then, if they're in one of the low race and ethnicities, they'll probably count three or four times. Okay? So, they're going to hit them multiple times. They have long-term target targets, short-term targets by each one of these groups, and they have academic achievement, academic growth, graduation rate, English language proficiency, which are our tail pass scores that count, and student success and CCMR for high schools. Okay? So, those are the way that we're judged for that one. The other thing is that these are only meets, grade level, and above. It does not count any kid who only approaches. You have to get meets, grade level, or above to count for or against us in this category. So, this is what it might look like. It used to be where if you were, you had a target, this target was same for reading, whether you were in third grade or 12th grade, and you either got the target or you didn't get the target. Now, there are targets that are set up by year. So, this year's target and long-term target and the interim target. And then, you have zero to four points you may get. And it's got it all over here on the side. I'm telling you, it would take days to explain it. But if you want to see how that works, I have some slides for you, about 12.
I'm just impressed you can even be get to explain this.
So, basically, if you didn't meet your interim target, and the good thing about our interim target, they're the ones that we've been setting for years. When principals come and meet with us, they're like, well, we're going to set our goals for our targeted improvement plan, and what are you going to have for off-students and reading? Well, you're going to have 34 because you can't have lower than what the target is. And so, we've been doing that for years, and they're great at doing those. And so, some of the interim targets match exactly what we've been doing. So, if you didn't get the target, but you made 1% growth, okay? You get one point. You didn't get the interim target, but you made 5% growth, you get two points. If you met the interim target, you get three points, and if you meet the long-term target, you get four. Okay? But how many groups are they judging us by? Four for four. Okay. It was a lot. It was a lot. So, what I did right here is just make you a little survey page that kind of summarizes it. So, in our star performance, the biggest change is we're going to have new cut scores, and they will not be determined until June and July. So, we won't know what approaches, meets, and masters are until then, which means we can't truly predict growth because you don't know whether, you know what, whether they were approaches, meets, or masters last year, but you don't know what they're going to be this year because they haven't set those scores yet. And A through F rating, they're going to keep it the same for star, once it gets to the scaling piece, once we get our raw score in scaling, it'll stay the same as last year, just for the star performance. CCMR, they changed a little bit on the sunsetting ones, you know, some of our kids won't get credit for those. But there's a humongous change in A through F, and we showed you that chart. It went up 28 points to get an A, 28 points. Graduation scale went up about 2%. You needed 96% to get an A before, you need 98% now. Academic growth, you saw the new calculation that includes the 45-45, and it's going to be rescaled based on changes in the calculation. That's that approaches, meets, and masters, we don't know what it's going to be yet. So, we can't really truly predict growth for this year because we don't know where they're going to set that. And then, relative performance, elementary and middle schools are, it says their cut scores can change. Relative performance of CCMR, we know changed. And then, closing the gap has been substantially reconfigured, that's a good way to say that, and then, rescaled based on changes in calculation. Okay? We don't know what the calculation is going to be yet. So, we're operating a little bit in the dark, but moving ahead and doing what's great for kids. I can say that as I've been in campuses and in classrooms and in data meetings, these people are really working to move kids ahead. So, here's a little what-if for you. Okay? This one is a true fact because they've given it to us from the state. Basically, they took NCISD's rating in 2022 and dumped it into the new system. Notice that overall, we went from an 84 to a 79 just by putting it in the 23 system.
Same kids, same growth, same scores.
Student achievement domain, we went from an 81 to a 76, five-point drop. 2A growth, we went from a V, a high V, to a low V. That's if the growth is not set higher than we think it's going to. That's based on a six-year estimate. School progress domain, 2B, how we would do against others, it says we would drop from a V to a C. And closing the gaps domain, we would stay at a C, and that was relatively unchanged. But we're, there are so many what-ifs, that goes back to what we were saying, those interim targets are things we were meeting already. Now, I have two here for high school. They're not as definitive because there are still too many things in play for the, for our schools that have not been set yet. These are based on the March update. We expect an April update, a May update, a June update, all the way through August. Okay? So, this is New Caney High School last year. Their overall rating was 84. Student achievement, 81. School progress, the 2A was a 70, but their 2B, where they compared to others, was 88. Closing the gaps was 73. Notice in the 2023, and so, how did I get these scores? Well, there's a scaling tool that's been put out by the state that says if you'll take last year's scores and put them in here, it will calculate your new score. So, that's how we did it, with a TEA-certified tool. And so, when we put them in, this is what it did to their score. It took them from a B to a D. Okay? Knocked a bunch of Bs to Cs, and we've got Ds and Cs. That's just by changing the system. The other one is Porter High School. Porter High School was a C, it had a 79. The difference between them was the CCMR points. They had a great student achievement and had a 28 of 82, 2B of 76, and then going through the 73. Notice over here, they still have some pretty good scores, right? And it says their overall is going to be a 78, but that will be a forced D in this new system. If you have a B for your progress, it normally would have made you a V or maybe a C. But in this new system, it says if you have your other three are a D or an F, even if you grew well, and that's great growth, they're going to force you to be a D. Okay? That's a big piece of information. So, will they be here? The thing that we know about the accountability system is when we got it in 1718, we all figured our things because, again, we were waiting for that manual to come out. Three days before it actually was published and finalized, that changed one formula, it changed a lot of people's scores. But right now, as it is with this, through this March accountability updates, this is what we have for colleges that we know are doing great work, very good work. And this is just by putting last year's scores into this accountability system.
More questions? Any questions?
I want to cry.
I want to cry.
I'll just go punch him in the face and he'll feel better.
They have questions.
And I will just say that that's why in this district, we've always said, and it always will be true, that the work that these guys and their teachers and students do every day will never be accurately reflected on a test. Nobody is against accountability, but it's hard to be held accountable for something when you don't even know the rules of the game. And so, you know, and I say game a little bit intentionally, but that's what I think this is, is just TEA and others in the state, you know, setting up public education for better. And so, anybody that can play the game and determine the outcome after it's over, it's always going to be in their favor. And so, I just appreciate y'all's work. We know the work y'all do every day is not going to be reflected on a series of tests or whatever accountability system out there. I know as a parent, I appreciate that. It's always doing best for kids. And again, it's an education piece. You know, y'all got the quick 15-minute version of it, and I know your heads are spinning, mine still is. And like I said, if you're thinking it doesn't make any sense, you are 100% right. And so, it's really, we're just trying to get ahead of the curve. It's good and hurting just educating our parents because they're going to see this letter up there, but my kid's campus was an A last year, now they're telling me it's a D. What happened? So, you know, it's just an example of something that we try to educate our community with because we know great things are happening, and that's why we never put a lot of weight in this because we know it never comes close to reflecting the work that our principals do, our students do, and work our parents and their kids in their schools. Thank you so much, Ms. K. Keep us updated. Y'all will hear from her again when, when and if we ever get the real deal manual that comes out. When the rules of the game are determined after those kids, as some of them crossed our stage two years ago, it's determined she was supposed to, let us know.
So, the one thing about the what-ifs, you know, we've been giving you these proposals at the end of April or beginning of May, they're going to give us our what-ifs, but they're also going to bless us by reporting it to the department. So, be prepared.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a lot of great work.
This is what happens when, quote-unquote, our commissioner of education, we do too good, they change the name of the game to make sure we don't do good in the public system. So, appreciate you, TEA, but thank you for everything. That was that superintendent's report. Just a little note, early voting starts today on our bond program. We've got Bull Silas and admin LGI, our two early voting locations. You can vote till this Saturday, 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM at both those locations. And then, next week, Monday and Tuesday, the first and the second, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and election day is May 6th. So, that started off today, so here we are on line 23. All 100% present. Please.
Okay. Item 7, there is no, nobody signed up for a reform. Item 8 will be moved to later in the meeting. Item 9, on the agenda, reports are proposals by board members.
I have one. The construction committee, construction committee met on March 21st, 2023. We hit three major topics. Porter Elementary replacement is on schedule and on budget. The campus will be open in 2024. Foundation is being poured, and the building will be vertical very quickly. And then, the roadwork improvements that are required by Techstock will be, will begin soon. Second thing that we worked on was the information system move update. The district discussed options for the information system departing, moving forward as a current office space behind New Caney ISD central office as well, past its useful life, so we're going to be making some moves there. And then, the 2023 bond update, West Fork Phase 2, planning continues on Phase 2 for West Fork High School in order to be ready for May 2023 bond program passing. Highland Elementary, the planning has progressed with the architect, the district, and the developer on the campus, and we'll be doing a site adapt just like Brookwood Forest Elementary floor plan, their office orders wrote. And then, finally, New Caney Elementary replacement. We're close to finalizing the site. That was approved on the March board meeting and the location for the replacement campus. The campus will also be the site adapt using the floor plan that we used at Brookwood Forest. Final thing that we worked on was an RFQ. The district realized, recently publication, an RFQ for the architectural firm to be placed on the next bond. Once this process is complete, the district will have a pool of architects to select based on the project and the needs of our district.
What else? Item on the agenda is consent calendar, consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, and consideration of instruction reports. Are there any further questions? Is there a motion to approve item on the consent calendar?
No.
Second.
Motion to move to second. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. We'll go back to item 8 now. Item 8 on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in a closed meeting under authority of Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551.072 for land development and real estate issues. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting. The time is 7:08 PM. The time is 10:07 PM. The New Caney ISD Board of Trustees is now reconvened and open session. Parties have completed their presentations, and it is now time for the board to make a decision on the issues before it. Is there a motion?
I move that we deny the grievance and all relief requested as affirmed in the superintendent's[1756.41]